All just trying to make me chairman, big deal.
All set.
All set? Okay. I'm gonna open that, well, I'd like to open the meeting of the board selectmen on this morning in accordance with Governor Baker March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law 30A20. This meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode host on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. This meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast Channel 12 and also be viewed on live stream WHCA TV. I will subsequently be, it'll subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. And we're into open session. And under new business, we're going to be discussing the use of our care funding. That being said, who do we want to go to first? Maybe Mary Beth, you want to start the ball rolling and then go to Ken and then maybe to the chief? Renault? You're muted.
Sorry about that.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman, if you don't mind, maybe we should start with Ken to give us an overview of where we are with the funding. We'll start there if that's okay?
Work with me, work with me. Go ahead, Ken.
And so we've got, as far as funding, so we started based on the different.
Ken, you're getting feedback. I don't know, I'm getting it. Is anybody else getting it?
Yes, I'm getting it.
I can hear it.
So based on, is it better?
No. Still getting feedback. Is it our computers?
No, he's using his phone. I believe we have a webcam on the way over there at some point today.
Okay.
Yeah. I just muted Brian. I think that might help. Sorry, Brian.
Okay, so we started. After all five phases have been distributed, we were allotted $2,322,000 to spend. We got the check back for the first submission last week. Our second and third submissions are currently in the review stage. I have a fourth submission ready to go out today. The Whitman Hansen School District has their first submission at the county as well. Then I'm waiting on them to send me a second submission. I got an estimated amount from John Tuffy, but I don't have the documents yet. I also have a figure for a second submission for South Shore Voc Tech as of October 2nd. And once all those amounts have been subtracted from our available funds, we still have 1,109,000 left available. This does not include the work that was done for the iWAVE project, I guess you could call it. And it also does not include the PPE order that Chief Brenner was gonna put through. So it'll probably bring us down to a little over a million dollars remaining.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Yep.
Mary Beth, would you like to continue with that or, as Ken said it all? You're muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. So I believe the second submission is about 664,000 and the third submission for the ambulance, 298. And then the fourth, you know, 50 to 100,000 there. So I do agree with those figures. I think now if maybe the chief gives his overview and then I'll interject with my thoughts.
Okay, thank you very much. Chief Brenner, you're on.
Okay, so thank you, everybody, for meeting with us this morning. I just want to give you some, some, some brief quick history as to how that we got to this point and how the items that you have in front of you were basically chosen for this next round. As you know, Frank ran the CARES Act program up until his retirement. There were discussions between Frank and other departments about needs and thought process and things were moving along like fairly well. After Frank retired is when I reached out to Ken to see what was left in that account or because what my plan was, was to put in a large PPE or to get the town through next summer. Because, you know, like we've been stocking up and then we use it and then we stock up again. It's kind of a pain in the neck. So with this next round coming through, my, my overall concern was a PPE was I'm not going to be readily available. So the thought process was to stock up on everything that's out we can. So the, 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 the first phase of the CARES Act, I guess the best way to put it was, was our concern in town. And when I say our, and when I say like our concern, the Board of Health, myself, like working with Frank, our biggest concern was our town employees, our town buildings, and making sure that they had everything that they needed to keep themselves safe. PPE, which meant foggy machines, disinfectants, hand sanitizers, gloves, mask, right down the line, spit shield and everything. And I, and I think that we've done a fairly good job with that. We have no town employee who has come down positive that I know of. Granted, a lot of our buildings have still limited access, but like we've done well. Several months ago, Frank and I spoke about running a COVID drive-through vaccination program as part of the town's hazardous emergency response program. That was going to require a tent and, and other like logistical, like items. Because we didn't have our numbers in as to the schools and what those numbers were looking at, we, we decided it probably wasn't like, like a good thing to start the plan at that time. Mainly because we didn't know what the schools were going to come in at and we didn't know what the rest of our numbers were going to look at CARES wise to keep us moving and keep the town safe. So after Frank's retirement, I, I, I spoke with Ken and we discussed all of the money and we realized that we had a substantial amount still sitting there. So in discussions as to what to do and how to expend that, because I wasn't clear on it, we brought Mary Beth in. So with your town treasurer and with your town accountant, they're the money people. They, and they're the yes and no team. We, we, we chose to sit down, Ken, Mary Beth, myself and Josh in the lower town hall. And what we were looking at initially was what do we need to get the town safely through the next phase of COVID? Keep our people safe, keep the building safe? And, 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 and what can we do, quite frankly, with the capital plan for 22 to take the burden off of fiscal 22's capital with stuff that we need now? Like capital items that could really help us mitigate and navigate the waters of our like COVID now. So we came up with a fairly decent switch of stuff, list of, of, off of the Collins Center report of, of our fiscal 22 capital items that we could really use now, like items like such as like furniture for the two elementary schools, like energy, like controllers, a couple vehicles, accounting software, stuff like that. So we had that list and we were looking at it. And after we had our meeting, we decided that, I believe that something like we would tweak the list and look at things like a little bit closer. And Mary Beth was going to have a conversation with Tom O'Brien. And Mary Beth, like correct me if I sway one way or the other on. So what came out of that second conversation or that first conversation with Tom O'Brien was that you cannot use any CARES money for anything that is either budgeted or part of any capital plan, period. Which, which we knew about the budgeting part, we knew about the forecasting part. We didn't know that the Collins Center plan was going to be considered out like our townwide capital plan and that anything on that plan was a no-go. So we took a breath and we said, let's take the weekend. Let's look at things, let's think about things. And over the weekend, I personally reached out to a couple of different fire chiefs and emergency management, like directors, as to what their towns were doing. I spoke with Hanover, I spoke with Halifax, I spoke with Sandwich and a couple others, and they were doing what we expected to do way back when is to run a drive-through COVID vaccination program. Once a vaccination becomes available. So, so, so on my side, I started looking at what it will take to run that COVID drive-through vaccination program. Logistically, it's a nightmare, but it's nothing that we can't deal with and put together. So I made my list of, of, in speaking with Bruce Martin, like and a couple others, like we made our list and, and, and and then we also looked at what we're currently doing in town that is either, and I don't want to use the term unsafe, but not best practices when it comes to building sanitation and stuff like that. Currently, we have our maintenance gentleman at town hall that's using his private vehicle to drive to the police station, the library, the town hall, senior center, the DPW, he loads all the sanitation stuff up in his personal car, drives it around, does those buildings and brings it back. You know, that's not really like your best choice of using someone's like personal vehicle, in my opinion. So we added a, like vehicle in for town hall maintenance specifically for decon. There's two vehicles for emergency management, basically because of the vaccine drive-through and the deconning of the emergency vehicles after they are used with a potential like COVID case. So that's how that list came to, came to like fruition that way. Then over the weekend, Josh, I'm like submitted his list of, of like IT stuff, which we all thought was right in the, like the line of what I'm like needed. Like, I'm like moving down the line to keep town, to keep the town safe and to keep things like moving forward. So with all this information stepping forward, Mary Beth and I wanted to have a phone conversation with Treasurer O'Brien, who is the grandfather and who's the governor of the CARES money. You know, he runs the CARES program. It's not the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Plymouth County. And if you wonder, if you remember, Plymouth County was one of three agencies in the Commonwealth that received the CARES funds and the Commonwealth of Mass was very upset that we got our $90 million and they did everything they could to, to, to get that money from us. So, you know, I, I just want to make it perfectly clear that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has no say and no jurisdiction and, 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 and no argument as to how Plymouth County spends its CARES money. Okay, so we, we, so we spoke with Tom on the phone on Monday. We, we, we went through our list, just as I just explained it to you. He had some thoughts and some, and some like suggestions and, and, and like he was fine on, on the, the drive-through center. He thought it was a great idea. One of the big issues that I was confronted with was that, was that during that conversation, we stated that, or, 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 I'm like, I stated that what I wanted to, 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 I like first do is run a flu vaccine clinic through the center and, 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 and do two of those, one just before Thanksgiving and one after, because practice makes perfect. So when the COVID vaccine becomes available, we know what we're doing, like we're good to go and there's no delay in getting our residents vaccinated. The funny thing about it, and this is how strict the COVID or the CARES Act funds are up in the county, the funny thing about it is the flu vaccine is not covered under CARES. And we cannot do a flu vaccine with, by expending CARES money for that. So that led me to go out and I'm, I'm working with one of our local pharmacies. So, so what the plan would be is that the Emergency Management Agency and, and the Board of Health would set up the logistics for, for a preparatory COVID drive-through center. And this local pharmacy would donate their people and their 300 vaccines and they would perform flu vaccines that day to, to do their, their, their outreach with our preparatory site that we have like set up. So that's in the works if this comes to, to like fruition today and, 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 and that is fine. So when we spoke with Tom on Monday, like getting back to that, we went through our list. He had some like suggestions on things. And, 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 and like he said, chief, I'm sold on one vehicle. I, I don't know if I'm sold on three. He said, okay, then we'll dial it back to two. It's, 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 it's not a big deal. Stuff like that. When we, when we got to the IT list, you know, there was a list of network switches for fire, town hall, network storage and stuff. And we didn't specifically identify specific departments because I, because I didn't think it was appropriate to, to make the list that tight. So like we said, network switches for the towns like IT system. His answer like wasn't gray, it was dark black of, 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 you know, it's not COVID related. Town hall, I like network, I'm like storage. He was like, no. Like right down the list. When we got to the permitting in, in, in the licensing stuff, he was absolutely yes. Town hall is basically closed. People are doing everything online and this is the perfect way to spend I'm like CARES Act funds for the residents of Whitman to, to do their permitting and do their licensing. And like the list went on like that and, 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 and you know, I, I hate to say, but you know, like 95% of what Josh had, had put down was pretty much either dark gray or black, you know, it's, 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 it's not COVID stuff. Now, like now I see Josh, I'm like, is, I'm like, you disagree with this? And I know that, I know that other areas of Massachusetts have, 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 have bought a ton of IT stuff through their CARES funding, but that's the Commonwealth, it's not Plymouth County. And Tom O'Brien, he's, he's the gatekeeper. That's my two cents on it. I will let, let, I'm like Mary Beth and, and like Josh, I'm like speak more of it. But, you know, my thought process right now is to look at the next step in the COVID, down my crisis and, and, and we've dealt like with our, with the safety of our town employees, the safety of our buildings, et cetera. I think that we need to now take that step and we need to prepare for the, the inoculations of, of, of all of our residents, those who choose to be vaccinated when that vaccination becomes available.
Okay. I have one, one question, chief. Don Volle had concerns after the election, after November 3rd, the election and, and the town hall is closed again till for, for town, town residents.
Right.
If we should have the entire town hall from the basement to the top floor, all sanitized and whatever sprayed down, you agree with that?
So we've deep cleaned the fire station, we've deep cleaned the police station, but we, but we generally only deep clean them after there has been a health scare where one of the members, family members tests positive or has, or has been, or has been, been like symptomatic. I'm not against it. I know it's going to be a large sum of money to clean that building. Todd is in there like every day. He, he, he frogs the building, he disinfects the building. There's been no positive cases in there. There's nobody symptomatic. There's nobody with high temps or, or like flu-like symptoms. I'm not sure if it's a necessity, you know, maybe if we want to do, do the common areas like the Great Hall and, and and, and like the common areas, that. But I, I think the town hall people are keeping their offices pretty well.
Oh, yeah, they are.
You know, so that's fine with me.
Yeah, I was thinking about, well, where they come in, where the line, the main hall where they vote, probably just those areas of town hall where the public has been allowed to go to.
Okay, I will reach out to Abel.
Yeah, and see what it would cost to get that done. At least that's the minimum amount, but I mean, I'd hate to wait for someone, you know, I mean, you would, your, your department would know if somebody tested positive because you'd probably maybe be on a medical run or something, right? And wait for that to happen before we do something with town hall. I would, I'm wondering if we should just do it and protect our town employees.
Randy's muted. He has a question.
Chairman?
Go ahead, Randy.
Personally, I don't think there's a better use of COVID funds than to give town hall a complete deep cleaning. We're, we're gonna end up with over 5,000 or plus residents going in and out of that building after Saturday. We don't know who, who has it, who is symptomatic. I, I think that I'm gonna let everyone finish, but I do have some concerns. I, I thought this meeting was set up to go slightly different where we were gonna actually put a team back in place. It's my understanding that this board sometime in July voted Ken to be the designee of approving all COVID-related funding submissions. And I know we had a team in place with Carl, Eric Jubet and the chief, but those people are gone and I think we need more of a team set up to give a more global perspective over what is being submitted. I've also looked into this and I know there's gonna be some other people here willing to talk. I, I have some concerns. But I think as far as submission goes, when you're talking about COVID funds, a, a deep cleaning of town hall after you've had probably more than 65% of the town roaming in and above town hall, it should be one of those things that is going to be a no-brainer. And I don't think it should be limited office-wise. It should be a deep cleaning. If the fire stations, if the police stations, if the library is getting a deep cleaning, then there's no reason why town halls should not receive that same treatment. And I'll let everyone else finish, but I'm sure there's.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I don't disagree with, with Randy on, on, on the main hall and all the areas and stuff like that. And, and if it's your choice, I can have Abel, like give us two options. One, to basically do the entire building, all the offices, inside, outside, everything else. And just the common areas and you guys can decide on what you want to have done.
Okay. All right, that sounds like a plan. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I do, yeah. I, I agree with, I agree with Randy that this is a remarkable experience over the next three or four days and the last week, when a lot of people have gone through the town hall, sometimes not sticking to our guidelines as to where they should wander. So I think Dawn's idea of having the whole building deep cleaned is a good one. I think we ought to consider it seriously. And as far as the, the reopening committee that Eric and, and I and Frank and both chiefs were on, that committee still exists and the Board, the Board of Health, that committee actually still exists. And as far as their input into this particular exercise today is concerned, is being carried through the, the chief and, and Ken and Mary, and Mary Beth.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any thoughts on it? So I guess what, chief, if you could, yes.
I do.
Okay, Brian?
I, I just wanted to throw my support. I agree with Randy and Dawn and Carl about this. The town hall is perhaps the, will be the busiest place in the town during this election and the pandemic. And for us, not to do our due diligence in completely scrubbing down and disinfecting that would be a dereliction of duty, I think. So I think that we need to make that first and foremost within the next week or so to get this done.
Well, all right, that being said, chief, can you go to that company that you have, that does your building that and find out the two options that we have and what they feel? And present it to Ken and Mary Beth and see if there's money available to get this done?
I'm sure there's money available and I don't disagree and, and, and if, if we feel that like we should do the entire building, then let's just do the entire building. I, 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 I don't disagree on, on like either, on like aspect now and like, you know, after hearing the concern. So I will reach out to Abel, who has been doing our buildings and see what they can do for us.
Okay.
Does that work?
Anybody else have any comments on it? Now, Lisa, do we need a, we don't need a vote on how we're spending this money? Or we, or what?
Well, you, you, you would, oh, Mary Beth?
No, I don't want to interrupt. Can you finish?
Oh, oh, you, you would want to take a vote, a motion to have the chief reach out to Abel to obtain the two quotes for just, you know, the limited cleaning and then the deep cleaning.
Okay, Mary Beth, you had something you wanted to say? Add to it?
Yes, and I agree, at least deep cleaning, you know, the common areas for the voting makes absolute sense. That's a no-brainer as far as reimbursement through the CARES. Just other spending that we're looking at, I think that it's, you know, our duty to look at what other items we could use with the CARES funds. A couple of things to consider is we do have submission two, three, and then four going out, which we have not yet been reimbursed for. So of course, I'm concerned about, you know, expending too much money and not seeing the money come in. We got that first check for 32,000 and, you know, I'm sure we'll see all or, you know, most of the other money come in as well. So I just want to keep that in mind. I'm always looking at cash flow, meeting the bills and payroll every week. If anything were not to be reimbursed, you know, that has to come out of a budget or free cash. It's not like a bucket of money right now that we have to expend that money. We're expending it out of our budget and then we're being reimbursed. However, I think that if we don't look at using some of this money, you know, that would be a mistake as well. So that's.
Yeah, if we need to get into free cash, that means we'd have to have a special town meeting. Transfer monies into an expense account for COVID-19. Ken?
So if, if, if we were to spend something for this and it doesn't get reimbursed, it would come out of the next free cash that gets certified, not what we got certified.
Okay, so we won't need to have a, a special town meeting?
I hope not.
Okay.
Dan?
Yes?
Dan, I think it's also important to our note that that, 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 that if we move forward on some of these expenditures or all of them or, or like whatever, we're still leaving about seven, like Ken, somewhere around 7, $750,000 on the table. And we're doing that because there, because there is the potential that the CARES money is going to be extended through March.
Yeah.
And what our concern is and what my concern is, is that there are several towns that have spent all their money and it's gone. And, and, and I'm totally against that because if we have, you know, right now, we're 1.99%. We're 7.9 per 1,000. Do I think that we're gonna go red today? Most likely when the numbers like come out, we're probably gonna go red. We, you know, I hope we don't, but we had June, July and August and into September with, with no more than like maybe one case. We've now got 20 positive this week. We have a cluster of five in town and it's, it's just gonna keep building. So what, so what my concern is, is that we get into January and I have, I have one shift exposed. Right, and I lose six guys and I have actual six guys. We need CARES money to keep public safety operational and, and, and make other, unlike precautionary steps. So that's why, like with Mary Beth and Ken, like, like we're trying to be very frugal and, 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 and watch what we're doing. And, and keeping as much money on the table as we can, knowing that December 30th may come and they may say, no, we're done with it and we lose $700,000. But if we didn't come forward like with options as to how that we wanted to take steps forward, then we wouldn't be doing our jobs because we'd be throwing a million dollars out the window.
Okay. Sounds like a plan. All right, so do I, I'll need a motion to, yes. Randy?
I, I don't know if anyone else has any questions on this.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay, all right. Justin, we haven't heard from you yet.
Sure, so I just want to make sure that we've, I know we've got a, our fourth submission going out. Is it tomorrow, Ken?
I'd like to get it out today.
Or get it out today. I just want to make sure we've covered all of the expenses that we know we've already expended that we think could get reimbursed. You know, overtime for, for the fire department, for any isolations they've had. The Board of Health, I'm sure has had a ton of overtime. Any purchases to help remote work? Just the things that, that we know we've already spent, so it's not a risk of finding the money if it's not reimbursed later, but yeah, the base stuff.
Okay, Ken?
This fourth, this fourth submission that I've been putting together should cover everything that we've spent up until either this week or last week. So it will, should have us all current and that does include fire department overtime, that's COVID-related. So it should have us all current, and that does include fire department overtime. That's COVID-related. And that submission is going to be roughly shy of about seventy-one thousand dollars. So the two submissions, or there'll soon to be three submissions that will have outstanding is for a little over four hundred and thirty-three thousand. So I would like for the county to move a lot quicker than they are so that we can get this money back. But yeah.
And then my only other comment would be that, I know John Tuffy hasn't joined us yet, so I'll see him here. But just to make sure that they've put in for the virtual teachers and virtual principal, things that like large-ticket items that we had to expend specifically for COVID.
So the second submission that he's supposed to give, it does include the Chromebooks.
Okay.
I do not know if it includes the payroll, which could be another chunk, although only sixty percent of it, as I share, to come out of what we have left. Depending on what he can pull together.
Anybody else have any, yes, Mary Beth?
Just two points. I would feel more comfortable knowing that we got the approval on the second round and the third round before we expended more funds. Not that we have to receive the check, but at least that it's been approved and it's on the way. And the other item is, you know, I only, I would feel much more comfortable, and Ken can speak to this as well, that the items that we're looking to go forward with are items that the Plymouth County feels are, you know, a no-brainer or, you know, pretty are definite. I mean, they won't say that, of course, until they review everything, but I don't want to see really questionable items, things that we may put at risk for not being reimbursed. That would concern me.
Okay, Ken?
So with the first submission that we got back, they approved everything?
Yeah.
Although that was from March to June, so it was like sanitizer, wipes, cleaning supplies, and the payroll, and all the payroll that we had submitted from the fire department and for Todd, that all got approved. So it seemed like it was pretty basic stuff. So now that we're kind of progressing further in all of the basic stuff that we bought for COVID has been bought already, now we're into this phase of the vaccination items that are here. Do we, when we talked to Tom O'Brien on Monday, did he say for sure that it was all going to get the prime? No, the permitting is, but did everything else, did he say that it would get, that he would sign off on it?
He can't, may I speak?
Yes.
To that, I mean, until he has everything in front of him. Tom would never say that. And he did say that two towns could submit for the same items. One town could be approved, and one town could not be approved. And I'm like, how can that, you know, why would that be? And he said, one town, we approved a new, you know, system or whatever they did, and the other town they didn't because it was in a budget.
Ah, okay, that made sense.
So it does mean it will be.
Yeah. Josh, you want to speak?
Yes, sorry. And I appreciate all the efforts, and I know that everyone's obviously at the table here trying to get things done. You know, I've done my homework, just like I think Chief Grenow has, and, you know, we're trying to work together here to to accomplish a common goal. I did the same thing and reached out to the other area communities, and I think I would suggest that our treasurer collector, Mary Beth, reach out to at least the town of Bridgewater and a few other communities and talk to their treasurer collectors in regards to the situation at hand. The big question I guess I have now is, maybe to Ken, is how often are we submitting these submissions to Plymouth County? Bridgewater is submitting their submissions weekly, and they actually did, I think, almost four hundred thousand dollars in technology over the last sixty days, and all were approved items. And according to the treasurer collector, I believe, in Bridgewater, the Plymouth County has not rejected any technology items to date, including firewalls, including switches. You know, as long as they're representing a need for COVID in regards to communication, which is exactly what these pieces of equipment would be doing, is keeping people connected, making sure we have the appropriate, you know, bandwidth and speed for the necessary communications going forward. If we send everybody home again, you know, and completely be work from home, and we don't have the appropriate communications in place, and I'm not even, not talking just about the town, I'm talking about the schools as well. My big fear here is that, you know, we're leaving seven hundred thousand dollars on the table, and I get that, and I'm not looking to spend every penny we have, believe me, but I think we have critical areas of need that, you know, could be, you know, well taken care of from the CARES Act. And, you know, I can't say what conversations transpired or happened with, you know, Tom O'Brien or whatnot, but I just find it very odd that, you know, the components that, you know, had, you know, basically requested are, you know, on the fence or not, would not be approved according to, you know, what I've heard. Meanwhile, of, you know, three or four of the communities that I've reached out to, you know, in general, were able to buy this stuff and have already been approved for some of this stuff. So I just, you know, I'm concerned. Like I said, if we have to go and do this again, we're buying laptops, we're buying tablets. I believe Ken mentioned that, you know, there was a lot of sanitizer and stuff in the first submission, but it was obviously additional tablets for the Board of Selectmen as well included in that submission, I believe. And I believe those were a part of that submission and approved. So from a technology standpoint, the permitting is a no-brainer, I think. I think the CARES Act has that on their website as a frequently asked question. So, but there's different modules, and I just talked to Bridgewater this morning before this call to confirm a few things, and they're actually adding fire permitting as part of that CARES Act as well. So there's definitely some areas of concern that I see that we could provide more efficiency for the community moving forward. If in fact, we have to close, you know, really lock down again, then, you know, I mean, how are we going to be able to get these residents to be able to, you know, do services here? I mean, if we have the ability to provide the electronic permitting, you know, I'd say let's just explore what we can as far as maybe dog licensing, because I'm not even sure about the dog licensing situation. We don't have a dog licensing application in place, and I haven't had a chance to talk to the town clerk about this, but I did have a chance to work with Laurie in the selectmen's office as well as the Board of Health on getting them on board for their permitting side of things. So I just have some concerns over the fact that we're trying to limit, I guess, what we're spending, you know. And again, I'm not trying to spend, you know, the entire thing here, but it just seems like we're sort of, and I get Mary Beth's concerns about, you know, the money, but I think what we need to do is we need to talk to some other communities and really, you know, figure out where the concerns lie as far as, you know, the revenues versus what we're expending out. I mean, if Bridgewater expended out almost four hundred thousand dollars in the last sixty days, it just seems, you know, overwhelming to me that the fact that we're sort of hunkering down, if you will, and limiting our, you know, expenditures to some items that, you know, relatively may or may not be supported.
Okay. Mary Beth, do you have any comment to that, or Ken?
My comment would be, you know, just my concern, being conservative, that we've already expended over four hundred thousand that we have, or up to with the fourth submission, that we have not yet been reimbursed for. So to expend another four hundred, you know, that could be eight hundred thousand, and that's a lot of money in our operating budget right now. So it's just, I don't really have a horse in this race as far as what items and needs, you know, that's the other fire chief, and as far as the actual items. Mine is just the money that we're putting out, and then I can't say that things are definitely, and Tom O'Brien didn't either, commit to anything being definitely approved or not approved. Some items were, you know, he didn't feel, you know, had a strong case. So that's my concern, is expending too much money until we have approval. It's all cash.
Okay. And I think it's all about, I think it's all about documentation, and I don't disagree like with Josh, and I support what Josh wants to do, but our discussion with Tom O'Brien was pretty much no. But if we can document it properly, like Bridgewater did in these other towns, and say that
Okay.
network switches for X and boom, 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 that's just going to build our case. And, you know, like, we're just going off of the conversation that we had with the treasurer, who like controls like the purse strings, and he was pretty adamant to us. But if we can document like these other towns did, you know, just like we did on the ambulance.
Okay, Josh?
Full page on that, which is the one.
No, absolutely. And I think the ambulance, not to say that it's going to happen, that it's going to, you know, that it's going to get passed, but I foresee, based on the standards inside the vehicle and all the additional, you know, pieces that were part of it as far as COVID, I don't see that being a problem. So that aside, that, you know, that's approved, and we move forward here. You know, just to give you an example, you know, a couple more items that, you know, Bridgewater ended up buying. They ended up buying a 3D scanner and a printer for the library, so they could actually print PPE. If we get to the point of, you know, not having supplies, I mean, being able to create your own supply. Stuff like this is really, I think, critical to our community, and I'm not sure how the schools, if the schools have 3D printers, how many they have or whatnot, but, you know, I think stuff like this that really would benefit us moving forward if in fact we did have a dire need for PPE would certainly be beneficial. They ended up buying a, spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a server with, that basically connects to all their temperature scanning stations that does facial recognition for masks and everything else. So I mean, there's definitely some, you know, some definite technological things that we could be taking advantage of, if you will, to actually, you know, make our communities, make the community rather safer, and just make sure that we're, you know, obviously, people are abiding by, you know, the regulations or whatnot that were set in place. You know, they talked about a phone system, you know, they, unfortunately, they did have an article in there for a phone system in their budget before COVID struck, so they were tasked with obviously using that capital article to pay for the phone system. However, there were additional expenses beyond that for the phone system that the CARES Act did pick up for them. So I think that, you know, from the school's perspective, I'm not sure, you know, what they would have, you know, on the table as far as the technology is concerned, but I think there's areas that we really should be, you know, taking advantage of in a good way, obviously, to make sure that we're obviously doing what we can with what we have.
All right, Lisa, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that it looks like John Tuffy has joined us from the school.
Okay. Josh, it sounds like some of the things that you think that are necessary, that if you do documentation by other, from other towns, that they were approved, that if you could put that list together, and maybe you and the chief can talk to Tom O'Brien and see if in fact, yes, this would be COVID-related, and yes, we can, we would be reimbursed for it. I mean, you could, you know, I mean, as again, I agree with the chief, we need documentation to prove to Plymouth County that, yes, there are other towns of Plymouth County that were approved for what you are looking, the needs that you think that we need and what you are looking to get accomplished. And if Tom O'Brien says yes, then I don't understand what the problem is.
No, absolutely. Absolutely. And I agree with that, but I think, you know, you know, Tom O'Brien is not making the ultimate decision, if you will, and I think that that's, you know, clearly, obviously, from indication of, you know, the conversations that I've had in the last week or so. Again, I wasn't present, I don't know what transpired in the conversation, and I'm not saying that he said, you know, yea or nay, but at the end of the day, you know, from what I'm being told from various sources, you know, from other communities, is that no IT requests have been rejected to this point now, and it's obviously been since March. So I mean, if we're documenting appropriately and obviously notating exactly, you know, the need for, you know, I don't see an issue, but obviously, based on the fact that, you know, Mary Beth has concerns, I think it would be an advantage to, you know, to us to reach out to the other communities, to talk to the treasurer collectors, to see what their, you know, status is as far as the philosophy behind everything. And again, Bridgewater is submitting on a weekly basis, and they said, you know, from what I'm being told is that the reimbursements are coming back fairly quickly. I don't know how, you know, Whitman is submitting. I don't know if we're submitting by month, by week, biweekly, or what the story is. But, you know, if we can submit, you know, weekly, and we can get the requests in there and speed things up a little bit, I don't know. You know, I'm sure that, you know, the town accountant, you know, Ken's fairly busy with all the stuff going on. So again, I'm not trying to throw any more work at anyone, but at the end of the day, I think, you know, it's advantageous for us to really take advantage of the opportunity, because we're not going to see this opportunity come up again. So if there are needs that we can specifically identify as in response to COVID, let's just do it.
Okay, Ken?
Ken, you are? Mr. Chairman, I think I've got waiting before Ken.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're not on the screen. I didn't see you raise your.
I think going back to discussions with Tom O'Brien, this board, the designee to deal with Plymouth County is Ken Lidle. And therefore, I think when department heads are dealing with talking about submissions, it should be done through the person the board has designated, is the actual designee by vote to handle this. I have numerous concerns, and some of it is going back to costs related to some of these expenses. Like, I know Josh, like you have the permitting software. I would like to find out, now that implementation of these extra IT items are definitely, you know, beyond due to the COVID-19. So how are we paying for that when Josh, not only are we submitting to implement the software for a functionality standpoint, so we can keep going properly? But I would guess going back to the chief's flu vaccine clinic, I see your capital items in there, but how do you pay for that when that gets up and running? Where is all that overtime coming from? Where is, clearly on the Plymouth County side, they do not pay for flu vaccines?
Right.
Who, and it's a fifteen thousand dollar cost, assuming we don't get those donated. Is that cost now on the town that's another fifteen thousand dollars? Are we obviously dealing with the worst global pandemic since nineteen eighteen? We've obviously seen, our fire union hasn't dealt with this issue yet. Are we looking at an issue now where are they going to come to us and say that this is a task that is a change in their working conditions? They want to bargain this. If we struggle there making that happen, are we now on the hook because we can't run a flu vaccine slash COVID clinic? And does it put the town on the hook now for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of vehicles and tents? I think optically, this is a fantastic idea, but optically is how you view things and really isn't always a look of what's going on behind the scenes. That, I kind of struggle with this, that I think there's a lot of questions to hammer out before we put, like Mary Beth said, put ourselves on the hook for another a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of items. I mean, I know we had the ambulance purchase, but that's the purchase that is out there in that tremendously gray area. We're on the site, Plymouth County site, they would not pay for emergency vehicles, and that's the thing we still haven't been reimbursed for. So we're talking about possibly tremendously limiting our ability to use for definitive capital needs in the future by spending now. And I think we all need to be aware of that. Never mind, and I see Mr. Tuffy here, but, you know, this thing is ramping up. It's coming back. We're going to go into the red. I just got a call from my daughter's school that thirty-five kids are quarantining there. So, you know, not only is it protection, like the chief said, but I think we may get into the point of now functionality again. And this is where I do agree with Josh that, you know, if we can't function properly, if Mary Beth's office can't function properly, if we're not collecting fees that may need to be done remotely, all of a sudden, you know, it's going to, at the end of the day, really start hurting our checkbook, and we see what happens there. So I just think, before we start creating costs of something that we don't know if our town actually would even do, I did read the state vaccine guidelines, and it did seem that municipalities would not even fall in to a stage three of the implementation of the vaccine. And that's when the vaccine was basically globally available, meaning that like Walgreens, CVS, et cetera, would be giving it. So I mean, in situations like this before, I think you would have seen Homeland Security or the Mass Health, Mass State Health Department, they'll come out and issue guidelines, I think, if they want municipality help. And we may see funding for this program through that. I just hate to see us tie up our hands even further here, and all of a sudden, we're just one, safety and functionality is what I think we need to really be looking at.
Okay. Yes, chief?
I don't disagree with everything that you said, Randy. One hundred percent. And my pitch today was, is like basically just to try to put on the radar, I guess, and try to get our community ready to vaccinate when the vaccination becomes available. And that's working with the firefighters' union, that's working with our medical, I'm like director. The, you know, just, just. The, you know, just just to alleviate like a couple of the the concerns is is the firefighters' union has already agreed to do the flu vaccines. It now appears that the local pharmacy is going to do those vaccines for us. So we would be running the logistics side of that, only not actually giving the vaccines, which covers us under the like CARES funding. When the vaccine becomes available, the state's plan right now is to have the national guard do it. The country's plan is to have the national guard do it. That's not going to work. And 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 with everything else, they're going to come back on the first responders and the private ambulance companies to say, hey, what can you do here and how, like, can you do it? So so like my whole, whole, whole like effort here is is just to try to tweak us and get us ready to do what is probably going to be called upon us at some point when this vaccination becomes available.
I I agree, chief, and I think we both have some experience in this, that you know, when when the government plan doesn't seem to be working out, that there's another round of funding and and they implement funding for these things. Like I said, I I like the plan. I I think there's some issues behind it, but i- is this where we now want to, you know, I think we're going to be seeing some definitive needs come up if if shutdowns happen again, and I would hate to safety and functionality first. I think that is what COVID money should be for. And I think there's some people here expressing, you know, let's take a step back and and make sure that those are the options. And and that's kind of what I'm hearing from, you know, what I'm taking out of what Mary Beth and Ken are saying, that before we, you know, risk some more money and then all of a sudden need things, let's take a more solid look at this. And correct me if I'm wrong, either Ken or Mary Beth, that there could be some reservations with further spending and then not be being able to meet the emerg- the emergency immediate necessities, correct?
Ken?
So with anything that I've submitted so far, probably aside from the ambulance, I'm 199% confident that they're going to reimburse it. Because there's nothing that I've put through that seems that didn't follow their policies, that didn't seem like it was outside of the realm of COVID. It's followed through with what we've spent before. Nothing seemed out of line. They've already looked at the second submission I've submitted and come back with questions, none of which were pertaining to why is this here, why is that here? So there's nothing that I think that they will ding us on for the second and third submission, and similarly with the fourth submission that I'm going to put through today. It's just that I feel like the bigger the item, the more of a spotlight is going to be on it, so to speak, which makes sense. And I just want to be be sure that that as sure as we can that that will get approved before we go too far down the rabbit hole with it.
Yeah, I I kind of agree. I I commend the chief wanting to be proactive as far as setting up tents and and getting ready, prepared to start giving out the shots, preventative shots, right, for the COVID-19. But I think we have needs right now as preventative. And right now, as far as making sure our buildings are clean, making sure a lot of the other materials that we need, we have the money for. And I'm hoping that in the end, if in fact, when the vaccination does come out and they want people to start being vaccinated, I know like myself, I would probably go to my doctors and get a shot and my, you know, Medicaid pays for it. But that being said, not when you have millions of people wanting to get in a line, right? And, you know, we'll say Whitman, 14,000 residents want to get in line and get their shot, we have to come up with something. That's the concern I think the chief has as far as getting that taken care of when it finally comes out. But maybe that's too far in advance, what we're thinking about doing. Maybe we need to take care the issues that we have today and and basically tomorrow, but not six months from now. That's my only concern. Does anybody from the schools have anything you'd like to comment on?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes?
Just to build on on Randy's concern regarding the union, the fire union, and, you know, payment for services regarding a flu vaccine. Chief Grino has stated that the union has agreed to do this, but I think we need to get town council to reach out to the union council and and get that all in writing.
Yeah.
Before any of that moves forward.
Yes, Justin?
I just wanted to give Mr. Tuffy or Mr. Pharaoh an opportunity. We discussed a little bit about the reimbursements to date, but if they could briefly run through what the schools have requested so far and and how that's going.
Yes?
Sure, this is John Tuffy. The items that we've submitted really have to do with have to do with personal protective equipment and cleaning of the schools. In some cases, we're looking at, we've put in for the purchase of computers because we're now running remote sessions for students. And so that was, those were hardware items that they didn't have. There's been software that we've that we've acquired so that we can run classes and do distance learning, things that we've never done before. And so we've had to build up infrastructure for that. In some cases, for instance, we've had a bus contract, and so we're paying for the buses, but we're going to be submitting here in our next submission for the extra cleaning. That's been in addition to the to the contract. So it's sanitized twice, twice a week in between sessions. That and we have some personnel expenses that we've set tallied up. For instance, we're now running a hybrid model for our students, but it's also necessitated the addition of some some teaching staff and some paraprofessionals because we're running a full remote program for students that that we're required to do for by DESI. So those are the sorts of things we're looking at. And going forward, we do have some, technology is a big thing for us. And we're looking at the very real possibility of doing more remote learning instead of less remote learning. And that requires an investment in hardware and software that we haven't had. Now, we look at what we're doing this year, and we're head and shoulders above what we did last March when it all came as a surprise, but we're not where we need to be if we're going to provide a the the kind of educational experience the kids have come to expect.
All right, Mr. Pharaoh, do you have any comments?
No, I'm here with John. Yeah, I I concur, I can agree completely, and it's all going to depend, you know, I came in when Randy was talking, it's all going to depend on where this leads also. But we do, we are still waiting for some of the the bills to come in, the invoices to come in themselves, but we do, everything he he talked about, he encapsulated very well.
Okay, thank you.
I I just, I did want to add that some of the, really what we're talking about is moving forward prospectively what we need. We certainly appreciate the money that that we put in for for some of the building modifications we had to make. We had need, we needed to create some quarantine space within the nurse's office. When buildings were designed, we never anticipated public health would say, you need to segregate these people out of off all by themselves. We've had to deal with some heating and ventilating issues. You know, the standards have now changed for the expectation for air changes and the level of floodpleness that that we're going to provide in terms of air. So those those items we have put in in our last submission, and I'm not sure that there's much more that we need to do in that area. But there was probably going to be a few more of those items that will come up. They sort of pop up as as we go along.
Okay, thank you. It's it seems to me that we're looking at more expenses coming down the line prior to us thinking about setting up vaccination stations, chief.
I I don't disagree.
Right. So I mean, I I I do understand your proactiveness as far as getting vaccinations out there and what we're going to do, but I'm wondering if down the line, when this is finally done and we're, you know, everything's cleaned and we've gotten all our supplies, if in fact, when that does happen, if the state isn't going to come back with more, or the federal government with more funding for towns to be able to do that, to take the pressure off of clinics and hospitals.
Right.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right, right. Nope, nope, I don't, I don't, I'm like disagree, but I wouldn't be doing my job if I did not come forward and present like what I, I'm like what I thought.
Oh, yeah.
I do have one other item that was just called into me this morning from the Board of Health, just and we believe that this takes a Board of Selectmen vote. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure. I spoke with Alexis last night. As you know, the Board of Health is pretty much, is is pretty much like underwater. They they've got their nurse that only works like 10 hours a week. With things ramping up, they can't keep up with what needs to be kept up on. And and the CARES Act does approve and 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 is for staffing costs. So, you know, the like Board of Health would like to try to 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 bring on a a second part-time nurse or some some like 10 people just to deal specifically with COVID, because they simply just can't keep up with it. So Alexis, that I would ask at this morning on the Zoom call.
Right. Lisa, you know, does that take a vote of the Board of Selectmen, or can that, can they just bring in either extend the hours or some someone new, and like Mary Beth said, it comes out of the budget?
Well, I mean, the Board of Health is is overseen by an elected Board of Health.
Right.
So their board should be meeting on that and voting on that. And of course, you know, the selectmen can, we can motion to support the Board of Health in that direction. But where they're over, they're overseen by their own board, I don't think it's necessary. It's not required.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Randy.
Lisa, I don't know if you could, you know, one of the things that we talked about in this was trying to keep track of the the work that we're doing that's COVID related. I absolutely support this idea of Board of Health endorsing it. If we can, I guess, if this is something that can is going to be a COVID-related employee expense, how are we keeping developing some type of system that, and I'm sure you could work with Mary Beth and Ken, as far as overtime, we're keeping track and somehow getting reimbursed in submitting for for these COVID-related work hours? Just to make sure that, you know, we are getting, you know, these things covered.
Ken?
Yes, Ken?
The Board of Health got a grant earlier this year that was able to supplement their costs or overtime that and other supplies that they were expending for COVID. So they didn't have to submit through the CARES Fund. I don't believe there's much left on that side. So if they were to go to the CARES Fund, I believe they'd be eligible for money that's not already in Article II. And anything above that is what we could submit for.
Okay.
At least, at least that's what other employees have been submitting for for payroll, like at the fire department and here at town hall. But I'm sure that the Board of Health has the rest of their grant money earmarked for other things, and that's why they are that maybe they haven't put everything through yet that they should, but as far as what I've seen, that anything that they spend that would go above Article II should
be covered.
For it, it's documented, that it's for COVID, should be eligible, yeah.
So you need to relate that to the that office?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, chief.
Ken, do you want to explain to the board how 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 say like we we keep track of our like overtime that's COVID like related and Todd and stuff like that, like just so they know that like that's how we're doing it, would that work?
So on on the payroll sheets that we get, there's the the base pay, the other overtime pay, and then there's a line or a row, a column that's strictly for COVID. And it's earmarked in hours and dollars. And then it's signed for by the department head and then signed off by the by myself and the selectmen. Those are the sheets, along with their time sheets through software, is what I submit to the county to get reimbursed. So we need, we can't just submit like the sheet that says, you know, this is what we paid this employee, and then just say, put in for like five hours. It has to be documented on the payroll sheet, what was COVID. And that it's above and beyond their base pay. So there there needs to be some sort of documentation for what was specifically COVID, and that it's not part of their base, or it's not part of their designated set overtime at the fire department. Like there's specific COVID overtime costs for the fire department that's aside from their other overtime, and it's those COVID items that we get reimbursed for.
All right, excellent. Does the Board of Health understand that?
If they don't, they will soon.
Thank you. That makes, that's right. So basically, there's no vote that needs to be taken on that issue then, as far as I can see. Okay, is there anything else? So, all right, let's, where are we going to go from here? I know the chief has a list of COVID expenditures that he's looking at. I think what I'm hearing is that we are going to be looking at items that are needed to fight the virus, but not to cure it, like looks like the tents and the things like that. So this COVID expenditure report, there may be a few items on it, such as, you know, the tents and things like that, that we may want to take a second look at once something comes out and see if the state or federal government comes in with more money for towns to do that, because I don't, I think the responsibility is to the town and and I think hospitals and doctors' offices and clinics would be overrun if they started having lines for people to be getting shots. So I mean.
I don't know if you can see him, but Brian had his hand up.
Oh, Brian?
Thank you. Two, two points. As some of you know, I was on a a trip out of state. I did 2,600 miles in 11 states, and I took a test before I left, and then I took a test when I came back. And the test I took when I came back was over at Mass City Community College run by Fallon. And it's that, the one I went to was on Saturday, and it went from 2:00 to 7:00. I got there exactly at 2:00, and the line was probably a mile long when I got there. And I pre-registered and everything, and it took about 15 minutes before the line moved. And it was extremely efficient, and it moved very quickly, and I was out of there before 3:00. So I was extremely impressed with their ability to get through this. And I had, that was Saturday, and I got my test results on Sunday morning, negative, by the way, and so I was really impressed with how that went. And that I think is how things might go once a vaccine is available. It's just my thought on that. That aside, what Josh was saying about the things with the electronics and and computers and things like that, I think that's really important. And I'd like to see a list much like what the fire chief did with this expenditure idea list. If you could put something together like that with much more detail on on things that we really, really need, which I think are very important, as I think Randy stated. And that we could see exactly the road that you're you're planning. And maybe we could, again, meet on a format such as this, and maybe we could submit what we've all decided is a good idea off of that list as a separate submission just for these kind of things. So it's not, the water is not muddied by other things, and maybe we can get that expedited expedited through quickly because it's all in the same category.
Sounds like a plan, Brian. Josh, anything on that?
Yeah, Brian, I appreciate the information, and certainly I have to agree, I think it may make it easier it may make it easier to do a submission just for strictly IT-related, uh, equipment and services. Um, you know, my only fear is here, we don't have much time, if you will. I mean, we're talking November, uh, you know, on, uh, what, Sunday, I believe, and, um, unfortunately, we only have until, you know, December thirtieth unless unfortunate, you know, they, they, they go ahead and extend it. Uh, but at this point in time, I think we have a clear cut note, note that the permitting side of things is, is sort of already on their, you know, page as far as their FAQs are concerned. So I think that in itself, again, uh, you know, there's other pieces of the pie, if you will, because there's also, uh, annual fees, which I had a meeting with the Finance Committee, um, the other night, and we had talked about this, uh, in regard to, you know, my budget in general, but you know, overall, uh, there's annual fees associated with anything, any software that we typically would implement, uh, including the electronic permitting now. Um, you know, I, I included the total amount in my budget for FY twenty-two, just, you know, for the sake of having it in there, uh, for planning purposes, uh, to cover the, uh, building permitting, the Board of Selectmen, uh, licensing for alcoholic beverage and so on and so forth, as well as the Board of Health, uh, permitting and licensing as well. Now, you know, like I mentioned, uh, you know, we could go and I could build a list, um, from the permitting side. I mean, uh, the biggest, you know, my, my biggest fear is obviously as we add these services, we're adding an annual fee associated with them. So if COVID, you know, the CARES Act rather pays for the, uh, permitting, let's say for FY twenty-two, if you will, uh, what happens in FY twenty-three? Well, what happens in FY twenty-three? We have to make big decisions and figure out whether we're going to include the, you know, sixteen thousand, I want to say roughly is, is what I think the annual fees were, uh, you know, within the budget that I added, uh, to, to pay for that, you know, uh, those services for the remainder, obviously, for FY twenty-three moving forward. So, um, you know, obviously we got to think about that stuff and that stuff is critical. And we can certainly document that, put it on paper so everyone can see it. Um, you know, uh, at this point, the building permitting side of things is already in the works. It's already, you know, it was already part of our, uh, our budget from FY twenty-one. So I know our budget didn't get approved until I believe July, and I think they mentioned something about, you know, uh, if the budget was already crafted and put together, uh, prior to March, I believe. So I don't know if that, you know, how that fine line is or whether or not the, the building permitting, we're, we're submitting the building permitting, so we'll see what happens. And, you know, if they approve it, they approve it. Uh, if they don't, we have the money for the, for the permitting aspect of things. Um, it's just obviously, like I said, the Board of Health as well as the, as the Selectmen's Office, and we did demos for both departments. They said it would streamline their operations significantly and be able to communicate and collaborate, engage with the public. Uh, if in fact we do have another, you know, shutdown, um, you know, obviously, like, you know, the Town Hall is closed at this point anyway. So, you know, other than appointments, it's, it's kind of difficult to get, you know, services done unless you're doing stuff online. Um, so, I mean, I, I definitely agree, you know, documentation is great. And I think, you know, looking at some of the requirements for the, the CARES, uh, you know, Act in general, I can, one of the lines was like expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees to enable compliance with public health, uh, precautions. That is a, is a wide scope, if you will, but there's, there's all kinds of, of opportunities there, if you will, that fit into that guideline. So I just, I'm just saying, we, 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 we're going in the right direction. We just need to, um, you know, make decisions fairly quickly. So if we're going to do another meeting, I, I, I'd, I'd say we're, we're going to do it, you know, fairly, fairly quickly. I'd say within the next few days because we really have to make decisions to turn this stuff around if we want to implement, you know, any of this stuff before, uh, the end of December.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, and Josh, I, I mean, just like you, you had said earlier, it's working with the schools and, uh, you know, and, and functionality and, and probably what, uh, we, we may not all want to talk about, but what lies ahead is, is we may be going probably, uh, all remote very soon. And, and it really is about, you know, making sure that experience for the kids in, in, in our, in our district are, are getting the best education possible. So maybe if you can, uh, I know George and John Tuffey are on here, but from an IT standpoint, if anything needs to get relayed back to our Board or, or Ken or, or Mary Beth or Lisa, you, you know, if you can kind of be the, the go-between there. And, um, just make sure that these technology needs, which, you know, are right up there with, that I have said this already in this meeting, functionality that just keeps us, is normal, the new normal and keeps us running as efficiently as possible. And I think that's, uh, you know, that's one of my main concerns.
Well, I, what about if we turn around and we have, we put together like, we'll say like, um, we have Mary Beth, we have Ken, we have the Chief, uh, we have, um, um, maybe Lisa, Lisa and, you know, and Josh, and they all get together and they come up with a list of ITs and other issues that we need. And, I mean, we're meeting on the tenth. That could be part of the agenda of that list. Of the, you know, instead of, you know, the list that the Chief has given us with, you know, some of the, um, issues of like the tent and lights and stuff like that and traffic lights and stuff like that to coordinate the, the traffic flow. Maybe that's a little bit too soon to be thinking about something like that, but other issues like that Josh has been talking about, Randy's been talking about, uh, and the overtime and stuff like that related to it. Maybe we back off on some of those, uh, you know, the parts about giving out the shots and come in with the thing, the needs of today.
I think there's definitely thing, things on the list that, that the Chief, uh, provided today that
Yes.
I think absolutely need to be, you know, as far as like signage for Town Hall, you, you know, setting those things up, uh, uh, obviously the permitting, um, you, you know, sign, I have no problem with signs in general, i- if. Uh, a, any information, I, I think if, there's one thing our, our Board probably has taken some heat on is being able to get information from the town out to the public, you know, so any electronic signage of the things we're doing, uh, emergency management.
True, but I mean, traffic boards, traffic boards, Chief, that was sold that, uh, you would relate, you know, the traffic going to, through it, the ammunition, you know, the tents, right?
Well, well, those traffic boards can, can use anything COVID-related like Randy was saying. So I mean, like we could put them up at either end of town or at like Temple or West or wherever to say, you know, like Whitman is red, wear your mask. And, you know, stuff like that or.
Yeah.
But you've got to remember that anything that you buy with COVID, like the Town Hall sign, which, which we really need to, to like replace, that can only display COVID information, period, until
Right.
it's over with. So like, so it can't be happy birthday, Dan, and there's a flea market at the church or whatever. It can only be COVID-related items displayed on these boards.
Right, exactly. So I mean, I, I would say, you know, is there, what, on the list, Chief, that you gave us? Right? What do you think can come off and be put in the background for future needs?
I think we take the vehicles off the portable lighting, um, you know, like the tents, and I think that we'd be looking to move on the Town Hall sign, um, the, the, like permitting, um, like submission and maybe move forward like with the signboards, just so like Randy said, like we can put some more information up that's, that's readily visible for like people to see in like strategic areas in town, maybe.
Okay. So, all right, so, so the list would be, uh, minus what, the hundred thousand dollars for the two vehicles? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Uh. Portable light, minus the tents.
Okay.
Or you can take the monitor off if not, you, you know, because we, we don't need that unless we're running the center.
What about the, uh, the Town Hall truck? The, the, uh, the usage?
Well, that's up for you Board to discuss and decide if that's what you think that we should have at Town Hall. I mean, at the end of the day, your janitor is going around all these buildings and he's
Right, yeah.
a vehicle. Um, keep in mind that that vehicle can only be used for COVID stuff in COVID period. So it's from Town Hall. It's a very strict guideline. There's a logbook that has to be kept in that truck.
Right, yeah.
And like quite frankly, if you decide to buy the vehicle and I see the vehicle at, and like Wendy's like drive-through, I'm going to come take the truck and park at the fire stations and it's going to we're not going to get stuck with that type of thing. It's, it's, it's
Right.
it's very strict as to what these vehicles can and can't be used for. That's why if you look at the new ambulance, it specifically says COVID response vehicle on the side, but because it can only be used for suspected COVID cases.
All right, that being said, then, uh, we're going to have to come up with a new list. Um, do we want to vote? Do we want to come up with a, a, a condensed list and we vote on it at our next elections meeting? Or do you want to do it now?
Dan?
Yes, Kyle.
If, if I may, I think the reason for this meeting was to, um, give the, uh, the people who are submitting for COVID CARES funds, um, an idea of whether or not the selectmen were, um, apprised of what they were thinking of, of asking for. And to sort of give them a consensus about whether or not it was okay, what they had come up, whether or not it was, uh, okay what they came up with. I think we've heard this, this, this evening, or this morning, I'm sorry, seems like this evening. Um, what we've heard this morning is that there may be, um, a, a need to add an item, or there is a need to, to add an item that deals with cleaning the Town Hall after the elections. Uh, there's a need to, uh, give Josh the opportunity to put together, uh, some sort of a, uh, of an addition to this list that we think might be, um, might be okayed by, by, by Plymouth County. Um, and that, that give that, the people who are making the submission, and there's a, there's a, there's a time limit on it. The reason, the reason, there's a time restraint on it. The reason why we're meeting today is to give them some idea as to what to do. Um, I think if we, if we add, uh, Todd's, Todd had misgivings about being, uh, of, uh, technology being short shrifted on this list. Uh, if we give Todd the, we say to Todd, uh, Josh, I'm sorry, we say, we say to Josh, uh, you go ahead, prepare a list to, to, to be involved. We said we add the, um, cleaning of the, of the Town Hall. And if, if we want to take off the vaccination things, that, 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 that that's all, all right, I suppose. But remember, we're, we're trying to put a submission for, uh, to, to make ourselves eligible to collect maybe one point one more, a million dollars in CARES funds.
Right.
I don't know if we need a meeting to vote, to vote that, to vote that. We could give the people that are involved, meaning Todd and, and Mary Beth and the Chief and, and Lisa and, and Ken, um, the permission or the, the, our consensus to go ahead with, with what we've just been talking about.
Okay, that, it sounds like a plan. Does the rest of the Board feel comfortable with having, uh, Josh, the Chief, Ken and Mary Beth and Lisa all together putting together a list? Yeah, Justin?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just want to clear up that, um, at, at least my concerns with, uh, us potentially going full remote again would be that the town employees have the capacity to completely work from home. So whatever technology upgrades we need for that, that would be my, my goal for Josh.
Well, that's, that would come under Josh, what Josh would recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if I, if I'm, if I'm correct, Mary, Mary Beth, I think, um, you might have brought this point up the other day when we had a meeting, uh, that there is a, there's a time limitation here with being able to get things in order. Um, so Josh is going to have to have some sort of a time limit on, when he can prepare some submissions to this group. Just to, just to, okay. And that, and not, and that would have come before, that would have all come before November tenth. That's why, um, I'm asking.
So just so the Board knows, the time limit is December. Um, it was made perfectly clear to us that, 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 you know, this money goes away on December thirtieth, not the thirty-first, but December thirtieth unless the federal government pushes it forward to March, which is a sixty-fourty option with sixty percent against us right now. Um, but they were also like pretty clear that if you've got substantial large items that come before the county that you purchase on December twenty-fourth, there's, you're going to have a lot of explaining to do as to why, like you waited so long and, 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 and risk those not being so. The, the recommendation to us, I believe Mary Beth and Ken, was to have all of our stuff in by the first week in summer. Up and operational, up and operational.
Mary Beth?
The items do have to be purchased, received and up and running, and we have to submit for reimbursement by December thirtieth.
Okay.
There's a short timeline.
I guess that being said, if you put the, then, if you put together a list of what's needed and make sure that we get full list from both regional school systems so that after, afterwards, all of a sudden, we don't get a bill for thirty thousand dollars. Right? They need to understand that. Um, once that's done, um, if there's monies left over, then maybe we may want, you know, it, once you put it all together and what we need, if there's monies left over, maybe then you'll add the tent and and so, you know, the proactiveness that the Chief wants to, uh, to do. You know, I mean, I guess you're going to have to run the numbers. Josh?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but, uh, no, I, I agree, but I think, you know, Mary Beth had a concern over obviously spending the additional money, and I think that was a major, you know, setback for us as far as to, you know, continuing to spend money that we weren't, you know, a hundred percent certain on reimbursement for. Now, I can tell you
Right.
IT perspective, when we're going to present stuff, uh, you know, I'm going to do my best to obviously, you know, uh, make it known that obviously we're dealing with a, with a, you know, um, a COVID-nineteen situation here. So, uh, for the, you know, reimbursements not to happen, it would be, you know, I'd say extremely, you know, knock on wood, unlikely, you know, in, in my event, if, if, if we're planning this properly. But at the end of the day, I think, you know, Mary Beth had some concerns over, over cash flow. So I, I think she wants to speak to us.
Right. Yes, Mary Beth.
Right, and, and that's how I'm looking at it. It's not, I'm sure that the items put forth of, by any department are ones that, um, we feel will be reimbursed. It's how much money we're expending out of our current budget because our revenue, of course, is projected to, for the budget for the year for twelve months from July through June, as excise bills go out, real estate bills, trash bills and so forth. So my, um, hesitation is to have eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars that we've now put out at this time. You know, and I still have to, uh, you know, worry about all the funding every week. So certainly I think that we need to, you know, take a look at this. We don't want to leave, uh, you know, a lot of money on the table for sure, and only target items that we feel, yeah, of course, will be reimbursed. At the same time, uh, you know, I'm concerned about cash flow, uh, money that hasn't yet been approved.
Okay, if, that being said, the sooner we get the, the sooner we buy the purchase and we submit them is the sooner we'll get the money in revert, reimbursed, true?
I would say true, and I would like to see us, you know, submitting maybe, maybe Ken, we could do that a little more often than we do now, so that in smaller bites, maybe. Uh, so things are constantly, uh, being approved because the deadline right now, while it might be extended, the Chief is right. The deadline as we know it today is December thirtieth and you have to
Okay, and, and, and we have to purchase. Now, Chief, do we have to purchase the items, have the items and using the items?
Yes.
Wow. So I mean, some of these things you could purchase and they could say, yeah, uh, but we won't get it to you for another six months.
Right.
So that, then that mean it wouldn't be improved. You, you have to buy something on a lot, like we'll say. Huh?
Pretty much. Yeah.
Wow. Well, I think, uh, well, I think, uh, I guess what we're going to have to do is, Josh, you come up with what's needed. We look at the numbers and, um, if we feel comfortable that they will be approved, Mary Beth, where can we get? Can we get a million dollars some, from someplace?
Right, your tax bill then, yeah.
Right, as I said, the revenue comes in all year long to meet our budget. So, um, that's my concern. We have to spend it out of general fund money unless it's enterprise money. I can't, you know, move money from the water sewer fund, um, to pay for general fund bills and then backfill it, you know, we can't do that. So that's why I don't want us, you know, to go crazy here because it's coming out of our operational budget.
Right. So, all right, bits and pieces, and hopefully the money comes back to us like the thirty-two, you know, thousand that we got last week. I mean, the more we submit it, the sooner we submit it, we may be getting a check every other week for thirty or forty thousand.
I would like to see us submit as often as we possibly can, yes. Um, so that, start seeing the money coming in.
All right, Justin?
Um, I, I guess I just have a, a question and I, I hope I'm not recommending that we do this, but if there are critical infrastructure upgrades that we need to make in order to have all our employees work remote, or as many as we can, obviously the fire department can't.
Yeah, we can.
And it's not reimbursed, then what do we have in capital stabilization as a break glass in case of emergency situation here?
Okay.
There's about six hundred and fifty thousand in capital stabilization.
Okay.
Okay, all right. And we need a town meeting to move that money.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just to, I guess, piggyback on something that Kyle was saying, I, I don't think we're looking to, our Board to have like complete control over what's being spent here. I, I, I think it's, you know, if Mary Beth and Ken obviously have an issue in, or worries, they should be bringing it forward, but But in no way, I don't think what you were saying, Kyle, should we? You know, be the are we going to be approving what's being spent our but by our board meetings, correct?
Yeah, no, yeah, I don't. I think what's necessary right now is first to say to the to these guys. You have you have an opportunity to get some COVID cares money, opportunity that to apply for COVID cares money. And and I think from what I hear, you all have a pretty good idea of what is what is available and what is eligible. You don't need us, you don't need to come back to us for approval to do it. I think what you need is and we've probably gotten it today is what kind of what kind of thing should be, are we okay with you looking at? And I don't see anything here that I'm not okay with you looking at. That includes that includes looking forward to vaccination tents later on down the line. In 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 twenty one. However,
okay.
I'm, you know, I'm willing to go along with dropping that. I I really need to see added some some attention to technology and some attention to cleaning the the town hall to the town hall sign, the permitting and the other things that are okay. I think you I think you people have the idea, so you know what we think is okay. And just go ahead and go ahead and do it.
Right.
In as timely a fashion as you can. We don't have to wait until November 10th. November 10th.
Lisa?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, given that new information, I don't believe that the earlier motion that we were looking at to allow the chief to go forward with getting the quotes from Abel is necessary at this time.
Okay. So we forward the discussion.
Excuse me, I I don't understand. I don't understand that. I thought we needed to go to Abel to clean the town hall.
Oh, no, I was just saying Dan had earlier had asked if if a motion was required was needed by the board to allow Chief Grenow to do that. But based on this recent discussion, it seems that the board is all the consensus is do what we need to do for COVID in that the board does not need necessarily need to approve every everything, every step of the way.
I agree.
Yeah, thanks, I understand now, right?
All right, so I guess the message is clear to to the chief, to Josh, to Lisa, to Ken, to Mary Beth, that the board, you look at what needs to get done to protect the town. And it seems that we're on board with it and it's and get it done ASAP, I guess.
Lisa Green, Abel should be out today to look at town hall.
Okay, very good.
All right, and so we
We have a plan to deal with the school to include the schools and and all this, right?
Right, yes, I would agree with that, Randy.
Okay.
Keep them in the loop.
And social vo tech as well, Dan.
Yes. So that's why I said schools.
Team effort, partnership.
A quick question, sorry for sorry, Dan, for you know, with all these purchases, we we still have to follow. And I believe I mentioned this to Lisa before, but we still have to follow procurement guidelines for quotes and other necessary items. So unfortunately, it does take time to get some of this stuff. But obviously, I think, you know, the decision that's being made right now, I think, is important, obviously, in allowing us to to get to work, if you will, and not have to worry about, you know, trying to come back to the committee to to figure out what's going on. So definitely appreciate the opportunity and hopefully we can, you know, do what we need to do to keep moving forward.
Okay, are we all done with this subject? Can we move on to the next subject on new business? We all set?
I certainly hope so.
Okay. All right, thank you, chief, thank Ken, thank Mary Beth. And for the schools, if you're still on, thank you very much. We're gonna go into our regular meeting and do other subjects.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second item on the new business is a vote to, wait a minute, let me go back to it so I can read it off my computer. It's a lot bigger than what I printed. Vote to execute discharge of mortgage of two forty nine Temple Street. Oh, Mary Beth, does she need to be on this?
Are you looking for some some background information on that?
Yes, Lisa, yes.
Okay, so from what I understand is a few years back, the town received a judgment in regards to the property at two forty nine Temple Street.
I remember.
Yes, so the owner of that property did come into the office and pay off the lien that the town had against the property due to that judgment. And this is just a formality, just to discharge the mortgage that the town held, discharge the lien that the town held just as a formality.
So so moved.
Second.
Second, okay, any further discussion? All in favor around how it's called, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And Kyle? I like to look at the face, Kyle, and I vote yes. I'm looking at Kyle, he's got the smile on his face, like, I don't have to do this anymore. Okay, next on the agenda, act to to appoint Mary Mary. What?
Real quick, Mary Beth just joined, I didn't know if she wanted to add anything to the discharge of the mortgage or if Lisa covered it.
So we just voted to approve the the discharge of the mortgage at two forty nine Temple Street.
That's wonderful. I have already requested a check on a warrant for the registry of deeds. So now I can go ahead and get that filed and released, so that's great.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Right. Act under approval, Mary Holland, the position of delegate to the AAA advisory committee through June 30th, twenty 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 two in order to fill existing vacancy, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Brian.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, Kyle? Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
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 Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Act on the appointment, Mary Holland, the position of assistant deputy director, senior citizen. Weema throughout June 30th, twenty twenty one, in order to fill a vacancy. Do I hear any emotion?
So moved, Brian.
Brian, second?
Second.
Any discussion? See a none, Kyle?
Yes.
Kyle, yes, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Acting appointment of Lisa Green to the position of member of the budget override evaluation committee in order to fill the vacancy. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
So moved, Carl.
Yeah, it's all set, Kyle. Kyle? Yes, no?
Yes, yes.
Randy?
I did, yes.
Yeah, there you go. Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Act on to accept the resignation of Dan Salvucci from the position of the board of selectman representative to the building facility and capital expenditure committee effective October twentieth, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, Brian.
So moved to Carl.
Oh, okay, Kyle second, okay, we'll do it that way. Any discussion?
Yes.
All right, Randy? Justin?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Act on the appointment of Justin Evans from the position from the position of member, three year member to the building facility committee expenditure committee, rescind that. Do I hear a motion?
I'll pick them up, yes, Carl.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? This is to take Justin away from being the three year member and taking my spot on that committee.
Correct.
So, okay, so I would give Kyle. Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
I'll abstain, it's me.
You'll abstain, ooh. And Brian?
Yes.
And I will say a big yes. Act on the appointment of Justin Evans to the board as the board of selectman representative in definite term to the building facility capital expenditure committee, do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
No.
I don't hear it.
Second, second.
Okay, whatever.
All right.
All right, Kyle?
Yes.
I'm getting tired, it's early in the morning, you know what I mean? Randy, Randy?
Yes.
I'll abstain again.
Really?
Yes, Brian.
Brian, and I'll say yes, your honor, Brian, okay. Announce announce vacancies on boards and committees. We get the full list. Let's see if I can get to it, okay. What we have for vacancies are boards and committees, and if anyone is interested in putting their names in to join this committee, they contact the selectman's office?
Mr. Chairman?
Huh?
I I have a I have a question. Earlier this week or late last week, I can't remember which, everyone here received a letter from Fred Small, school committee member, requesting one of the vacancies on the building facilities and capital expenditures committee. I'm wondering if 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 I could make that motion to have him take one of those vacancies. We need to grab people when they want to be on something as soon as possible before they change their mind.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, that is actually on the agenda for the November 10th meeting.
Just wanted to make sure that we we didn't want to let him get away.
Yeah, that that's on the November 10th.
Okay.
Just on the same thing kind of Brian was talking about. I I know we've we've had a couple people and Lisa, you probably answer this. The DPW, are we gonna have a joint meeting with them to get that? Like Brian said, strike while the iron's hot, and we have people willing to do this.
Right.
Get those positions filled, and I know that's a joint meeting, so.
Last.
Right, yeah. As soon as we receive, they they were directed to go to the website and fill out volunteer forms. As soon as we as soon as we get those, we'll be moving forward with that and we could probably schedule that for one of the next, maybe November or early December meetings.
Yeah, I know the DPW has applicants that have already filled out the form through the the website, so.
Okay, okay.
So.
I'll have to get with Josh to see where they where they've gone to. They're they've not come through with the in the normal process, so I will check with him and get that taken care of.
I'll let you make the the announcements.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I was just wondering if we could maybe send that list off to the express, Whitman Express, so we could get that in the next edition, the next available edition anyway, to these vacancies. So, you know, not everybody, while I don't understand it, not everybody watches our meeting. So
Good idea.
Get that, but maybe we get a little bit more action.
All right, that's a good idea. Lisa, what do you think?
Yes, we we can we can get that submitted, absolutely.
Beautiful, okay, so I'll still make the announcements in case somebody is watching this. AAA advisory committee, there's one alternative, one alternate delegate vacancy to twenty twenty two. Board of Appeals is one associate member vacancy to twenty twenty two. The building facility committee expenditures, there are two vacancies. One, as Brian said, someone's already interested in. And we'll be dealing with that our next meeting. And if somebody else comes before us that wants it, they should put their name in and we can maybe put it on the same agenda next week, our next meeting. Conservation Commission, there's one one vacancy to twenty twenty two and two alternate member vacancies, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three. Department of Public Works, there is one vacancy, twenty twenty two. Economic Development Committee, one vacancy at large, twenty twenty three. One vacancy, plant representative, planning board representative, twenty twenty three. Fair Housing Committee, one vacancy to twenty twenty one. Historical Commission, there is one associate member vacancy till twenty twenty two. Planning Board, there is one vacancy to twenty twenty one. I believe that's an elected position, right? Recreation Commission, there is one non voting member vacancy till twenty twenty two. Whitman Council, cultural council, four vacancies, three for twenty twenty one and one ending in twenty twenty two. And the Whitman Housing Authority, there is one vacancy. And that has no limit. And I believe that isn't, is that an elected position also, I believe, not too sure.
It is.
Yeah, so that's it. So I believe that that ends our meeting. Is there anything else that has to be brought before the meeting?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, I know we might have said it yesterday, I wanted to thank Kyle for all his years of service on the as a chairman of this board because he certainly has done it with grace and kept us all looking much better than we really are. So I just want to take a moment to thank him for all the services, chair, all these years, and it certainly made me look better. Thank you.
I agree with you, and Kyle, stop smiling because you're not chairman.
Looks like you sleep.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Brian. I'm just gonna tell Brian it was easy to make him look good.
Are you up?
I think he was frozen.
It was frozen, oh, all right, sleepy Brian, sleepy sleepy Kyle.
Okay, okay, so, Sal.
All right, there you go, all right. That being said, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Don't move, motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
All right, second.
Yeah.
Round the around the board. Kyle? Yes, to resign?
Yes.
Randy? We have these meetings in the morning are tough. Randy, yes?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And you're late for your appointment?
Yeah, I just canceled it.
Okay, and I'm the yes, all right, thank you for everybody. Hopefully, we got a lot accomplished today dealing with COVID nineteen. All right, thank you.